This is my...
Oh, is it?
Yes.
Okay.
Karen Williams doing that.
Right.
Power.
Yes.
Oh.
Yeah.
You bad.
Okay.
Why?
We actually think why.
Uh, he's the cornerback.
Next.
He's, uh...
No, he was never...
Do you see what I mean?
That's what I was trying to...
I was just...
Yeah.
So why?
So...
I want to look at some of the...
Right.
You see?
One now.
Either person sold that.
Okay.
Yeah. Don't move your head.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I'm sort of...
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. I'll just, you know, I'll just see if someone...
Um...
You know, and that's okay. Cause I'd want to... I have everybody. Everybody is great.
Yeah.
I guess those are...
Has it...
Works over.
See, I'll go there. You know what? I'll just state it. It's gonna be me anyways. It's gonna be anyways. And I'll just ask, can we step up here and hold the banner?
And how are your glasses good?
Oh, I didn't... Yeah, let's go.
Oh, really?
Sorry.
It looks like...
They show... The film that they usually operate you that they do. So I just want to make sure this is filmed in what I see.
Yeah. Yeah. Doing it in the best possible way.
Everybody...
I am, it's, I'm taking a picture from here. So I have...
And you really feel like in order for me to be right though?
I'm great. Brianna Ross. Yes.
And it's kind of silly to have him...
Say so.
So now, so now I have...
It's more just a physical...
Good evening, everyone. At 6:00 PM, Wednesday, September 20, 2017. If you'd like to call a order, Gregor Reunion, North Canton City School District, Board of Education. Mr. Tolson will call. Mr. Hunt?
Here.
Mr. Cross?
Here.
Mr. Greewell?
Here.
Dr. Marion?
Here.
Mrs. Van Brink?
Here.
Could you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. A motion of not to agenda submitted.
Done.
Questions on that? Mr. Greewell?
Yes.
Mr. Cross?
Yes.
Dr. Hunt?
Yes.
Dr. Marion?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Brink?
Yes.
I do not see any presentation. I just get to correct how it's written. I go to the public speaks. Board policy allows individuals to speak for five minutes as long as the speech is not frivolous, repetitive, or harassing. Get one speaker tonight. Mary Kay Cornell. This is Cornell. This is Cornell?
Yes.
Cornell.
Oh. Okay.
So a microphone.
All right. Could somebody please hold this banner for me? Now? Would you mind, please? Thank you. That guy's gonna call my friends. I just feel like that if you don't, please, show me things. All right. Today? Today at this moment, it is a new Jewish New Year, and it's also the Islamic New Year. Uh, my job's to bring peace, and it's my birthday. So right now, yesterday was 57/7. I was born on 57, on the seventh day, married my husband July 8th. That was yesterday. Today, it's 57/7/8. And, um, I was born in 57/7, married my husband July 8th. Next year, it's 57/7/9, which is my birthday, which I put on that piece of paper. So for the people, the Islamic, the Jewish, everybody, it talks about the moon. This is the moon in my house, and also, uh... I don't have that picture. But, uh, what I did a couple of years ago when I came here, and maybe that picture is not here, well, it's there, I came because I wanted to make a banner. And it says, it's about a picture of artwork that the kids had drawn, drawn in the four-year off-line. And it just said something about brothers and sisters, come together, help each other, marry our mother. It's that simple. That's my gift. And then I'm gonna read this to you. I gave that information to them because I wanted to... Eleven years ago, when I was on the stroke floor, I promised God to be advocate for the youth. And on 11/13/2008, I received these miracles. And I still receive them because now it's in my house, and now God said it's time to go forth. I'm going after trafficking children, drug addiction, and I was meant to read this today. 9/19/2017, last day of the Jewish year, 57/7/7. 9/20/2017, sundown, the New Year, Islamic and Jewish year, 57/7/8. Married my husband Lauren Peter Cornell, 7/8/89. I, Mary Kay Jeniton, 57/7/9, month, 57/7/9, Hebrew Jewish year, 2018 to 2019. God, Jesus is worth, God plus Jesus is with... I'm sorry. God plus Jesus is wish, a birthday gift, Faith Family Church from Pastor Dave. It's going to be a home for Mother-Father choice, the Trinity is Mary God Christ. Events Labor of Love, date 10/28/2017, at Tammy Shammer, Canton, Ohio. My mother, Marvella Marie Pettit Jeniton, French tree traces back to 1713. One of my ancestors, Joseph J. Pettit, sang in the Laminations of Prophet Jeremiah. My grandfather Clarence Peddles Pettit, his mother Mary Ger- German. My grandmother Mary Stella Schaper Pettit grew up in Fodo, Fodo, Ohio, 100% German. My mother sighed, I'm more German, a little Jewish plus French background. So in the truth of this, we're all God's children, it doesn't matter to me. My grandmother's friend was Rhoda Wise, who had the Stigmata of Jesus Christ. Now I received the miracles, God's ban, beautiful, awesome miracles. I graduated from Timken High School in 1975, in the inner city, my friend Black Magic, I White Cloud. Stroke floor 11 years ago, I promised God, Jesus in the clouds, 11/13/2008. So... This is what I'm talking about. It's gonna be coming out very soon. It's gonna be coming out on the 28th of October because I'm presently married to my husband for 28 years, and Jesus appeared at Rhoda Wise's house on the 28th. I, uh, I graduated from Timken High at age 17, married my husband, a virgin at 31. I'm a prodigy in the Bible, artwork Bible light before your eyes. Thirty-one God six-packs, first pack fundraised for home for the children. The next thirty will be a fundraiser for all Ohio public schools. Seven percent of the prophets contribute to the fund, Mother-Father choice for public schools. I will harrow God's good people, plus college graduates, to oversee the fund. It is illegal to fund schools through property taxes. Ohio Lottery, no success. Ohio is funding charter schools with their own tax dollars unless it's going to the public schools. We all know this, and so this is, everybody's gonna say, what is your solution? I have it. God bless, Mary Kay, body, soul, spirit, Jesus is with. So I just wanted to address this because I meant to. I promised God I would do this, and all my friends are waiting and praying for me, and they can't wait to... They said this is gonna be out there on YouTube, and they can't wait to see it. So thank you all, and we all come together and do what God intended us to save the children. God bless.
Thank you, Mary Kay. What have you got on in the agenda, Mr. Tolson?
Okay, approval of the minutes. We have two different meeting minutes we'd like to approve. It's recommended the minutes of the August 16, 2017 board meeting be approved, as well as the minutes of the August 25, 2017 board meeting.
A motion to approve the minutes as detailed below. To move.
Second.
I have a question. We're gonna go back and amend the resolution. It's okay to approve the minutes.
Yes. Uh, Mr. Greewell?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Brink?
Yes.
Mr. Hunt?
Yes.
Mr. Cross?
Yes.
Dr. Marion? Uh, next, financial reports. It's recommended that track, trackers' financial reports for August 2017 to be approved.
Motion to approve the financials as submitted.
Some of them. Second.
Questions?
Mrs. Van Brink?
Yes.
Mr. Cross?
Yes.
Mr. Hunt?
Yes.
Mr. Greewell?
Yes.
Dr. Marion?
Yes.
Annual appropriations measure. It's recommended that the annual appropriations be adopted for the 2017-18 school year, that the appropriations made, the temporary appropriation method, measure, be chargeable to the final appropriations.
Motion to approve the recommendations on annual appropriations as attached. To move.
Second.
Questions? Anybody?
Mr. Greewell?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Brink?
Yes.
Mr. Hunt?
Yes.
Mr. Cross?
Yes.
Dr. Marion? And our forecast, it's recommended the five-year financial forecast for the North Canton City School District for fiscal year 2018 through 2022 be approved for submission to the Ohio Department of Education.
Motion to approve the recommendation on five-year forecast as attached.
Some of them. Second.
Any questions? I'll let you know if you share. We've got the last hour of the board session.
Nothing additional but covered at this point. Sorry.
I meant with the audience.
Oh. We, uh...
I don't think it's dramatically different than what we saw last year.
No. Our projected ending balance for 2018 will be very similar to what we had projected to be 18. There are some adjustments on the revenue and expense side, but our ending balance is very similar to where we thought it would be two years ago.
And what was the percentage? How close did you come to your projections this year?
On the revenue side, we are under budget by 0.13 of a percent, and on the expense side, we are 1.11% under budget on the expense side. Thank you. Okay, roll call is, Mrs. Van Brink?
Yes.
Mr. Cross?
Yes.
Mr. Hunt?
Yes.
Mr. Greewell?
Yes.
Dr. Marion?
Yes.
We're on the curriculum, Mr. Plodio.
Good evening. Just want you to, uh, we've got the presentation this evening mainly on the state report card results, so if you give me a moment, I'll get that set up. Before I get to the state report card results, just a couple of things. We have, on September 1st, we had a board, had a district special development day, fantastic day. We had many, many staff members begin presenting sessions in the afternoon. We had, uh, our annual Ohio Teacher Evaluation System training. We had literacy sessions. We provided teams, teaching teams and grade level teams the opportunities to collaborate. I emailed to you just a schedule of that overall day, so you can see what occurred that day, very similar to our February 17 PD day that we had last year where there was a lot of staff presenting. So I'd like to recognize and thank the staff members who stepped up to present to the colleagues. It was a very, very worthwhile day. The other thing I want to mention from the curriculum side before we get into the state report card is that you have Mills, North Canton Middle School Principal David Eby provided you in your packet today some information on sixth-grade camp. We are changing our sixth-grade camp this year, and instead of going overnight to Camp Lus Kingdom, they will now go for a full day instead at the Wilderness Center in Wilmots, Ohio. Some cha, reasons, some of the reasons for this change, more cost-friendly for our families. Programs, they have very excellent programs at the Wilderness Center that are aligned to Ohio standards. And just quite frankly, the facilities at Camp Lus Kingdom have not been updated in a while, and getting to the point where that needed, we felt just was not meeting our needs. So if you have any questions, we can address those if you'd like. Now I want to get to the state report card. As you probably know, last Thursday, the state report card was released by the Ohio Department of Education, and I also provided you with hard copies of everything up in these slides. Sometimes some of the information will be a little bit difficult to see. I also emailed you a digital copy as well, because I know that some of you prefer that. So this is just the overall state report card. Looking at the first page, every district in Ohio and every school building in Ohio receives six overall component grades. We're happy to say that we received all As and Bs on our state report card. We're one of the very few districts in the state of Ohio that can claim that. And if you look at the gap closing in the K-3 literacy component on the left-hand side, a year ago, those grades for the North Canton City Schools were a D. We improved those to a B. Everything else has actually stayed the same, but there's been some nice improvements within the other four components. So I'm going to highlight some of those things for you this evening. Actually, if I can go back to this just for a moment also, just achievement is in reference to all of the state test indicators and the gifted indicators. I will go over that in detail. Gap closing is how much of a gap exists in the percentage of students who are passing state tests for your various student subgroups? And are you making progress towards closing those gaps, if gaps exist? K-3 literacy, they take a look at the students who, in the beginning of kindergarten, first and second grade, how many of them, how many of those students who are not on track with their reading skills are on track one year later at the beginning of the next school year? As well as they look at the students at the beginning of third grade, and are they on track with their reading skills or on level by the end of third grade? And then progress is mostly our value-added. That's the growth that students are making in one year. So by achieving an A, and notice, we have an A in all four subcomponents of progress. So when you look at our students overall as an entire district, we earned an A for the progress that all of our students are making. But also, if you look at the gifted students, if you look at students with disabilities, and then if you look at the students in the lowest 20% of achievement across our district, all of those students progressed more than what was expected in the school year. So we earned an A in all of those categories. And in our graduation rate, there's a four-year and a five-year. We continue to earn an A there. And then prepared for success is a high school component. It looks at the number of students, the number of credits that are earned through college credit plus. It looks at things like student scores on AP exams, looks at the number of college credits that students earn, look at their average ACT scores, and we're doing quite well there with a B in prepared for success. A year from now, the state of Ohio will, for the first time, give an overall letter grade to every district. So up to this point, you've got the letter grades in six components. The method that they will use for that beginning next year is that they will assign 4, 3, 2, 1, 0 points for an A through F, and they will weight the achievement category and the progress category at a 20% level. The other four categories will be weighted at 15%. And Rich Exner, who's a writer for Cleveland.com, did the calculations for every school district in Ohio, was published online. I'm happy to report to you that right now, using those calculations, the North Canton City School District ranked 16th out of, tied for 16th out of the 608 school districts in the state of Ohio. So very pleased, want to thank our... Want to thank every single person who interacts with our students on a daily basis. It's not only the teachers, our classroom assistants, our cooks, our custodians, our bus drivers, everyone in the financial office, our secretaries, everybody who has a part in what we do on a day-to-day basis has had an impact in making that happen. A year ago, they did a very similar ranking, Rich did, except he weighted all six of the categories equally. At that time, we were tied for 30th in the state. So we moved up from 30th to 16th. Both years, last year and this year, we are the top school district in Stark County using that method. So very excited with the results that our students are getting and what our teachers and everyone is doing to help them attain those results. Just a couple, looking at comparison from 2016 to 2017, there are 24 total indicators in the state report card. Twenty-three of them are tied to state tests in grades three through high school. The 24th is the gifted indicator, and that is connected to, they look at the number, excuse me, the number and percent of students who are identified as gifted, the number and percent of those students that you are serving, because you're not required to serve gifted students just because they're identified in Ohio. And they also look at the achievement of those students, and then they look at the progress that those students are making. So there's three separate components to that gifted indicator that you have to hit. Now you'll see in parentheses, 22 of 29 there last year for 2016. There were six other indicators at the high school level a year ago that have now dropped off. Those were the old Ohio graduation tests. So when we want to compare just this year's 24 indicators to the same ones we had last year, you see that our district met 17 of 24 in 2016. We moved up to 20 of 24 in 2017. That's the highest number of indicators met by any district in Stark County. Our performance index, which is a score that is given or arrived at by looking at the percent of students that score in the advanced category, then the accelerated category, the proficient, and then also the basic and the limited. And a point value is assigned for each of the students who score in those levels. The higher performance index score is, the better. We raised our performance index score as a district by three points, going from 97.7 to 100.7. Every single building raised its performance index score this year. Percent of all tests taken which were passed, we increased that by almost 5%. Percent of all tests taken which scored accelerated or better, we raised that by almost 10%, or about 10 and a half percent. So again, we're looking at our students, not only our passing percent, but we're looking at our students who are scoring in the top two levels, in advanced and accelerated. This past year, 60 and a half percent of our students, I said 10, I'm sorry, about seven, or about 2 and a half percent, but 60 and a half percent of our students scored in the top two categories. We're very proud of that. And the percent of all students, or all tests taken where our student scored limited, you can see while we're increasing the percent of students who are scoring in those top two performance levels, we're also decreasing the percentage of students that are scoring in the very bottom level. Want to highlight some, some great district increases. These particular tests all had double-digit increases in the percent of students who passed the state tests, ranging from 10.3% in Algebra I as a district, all the way up to 16.6% increase in the passage percent for seventh-grade ELA. I also want to recognize these building increases in passing percent, because these are huge. You look at Orchard Hill, third-grade ELA, and this is a very, very important, all of the tests are important, but this test is very, very important also because of the third-grade reading guarantee, which I know that you're familiar with. And fortunately for our district, 100% of our students met the criteria in order to be promoted to the fourth grade. But look at Orchard Hill, they had a 19.1% increase in the passage rate of their third-grade state test in ELA. And Greentown at the fifth-grade level in ELA, 19%. Uh, all the way down to Hoover High School, American Government had an 8.3%. So those were the five largest increases in passing percent at the various buildings. I talked earlier about performance index. Every single building that has a performance index, and that would be our grades three, third grade on up. So our two elementaries and our preschool do not have performance index because they do not have state tests, but all of the others do. Every building increased its PI. Want to recognize Orchard Hill, they have a performance index of 107.1. And the greatest increase in the district was Hoover High School increased its performance index by 5.8 points. I can tell you that is a huge increase, and they worked very hard, and very proud of that accomplishment. And the district gifted PI also increased from 116.96 to 118.17. And we had to get it to at least 117 to meet the gifted indicator, because that was the the new requirement. It had gone up the last three years. It's now 117, and that's where it will stay. That's a very difficult student population group sometimes to grow, and our teachers did a phenomenal job. Looking at our results relative to the state averages, I've talked about this in the past, but if you look from 16 to 17, the state average increased by about 2.88% when you look at the average across all state tests, the passing percent. Our passing percent relative to, compared to 2016, increased by 3.5%. So we were already way above the state averages, but we've increased that gap above the state averages. So we're thrilled for our teachers and our students and everybody who's contributed to that. And again, here are some huge increases. Our Algebra I as a district, our passing percent is almost 34% above the state average, ranging all the way down to English I, which is 27.63% above the state average. So those, every one of our tests is above the state average, our passing percent, but I wanted to highlight these five as they are the five that are the greatest, that have the greatest difference between us and the state's average. Talked about, um, our, our gap closing. And a year ago, or about, actually about 13 months ago, I stood in front of our staff at Convocation Day, and I talked, and we had a lot of celebrating because we had great state report card results a year ago, but I also said to them, look, one of the things we have to look at is our gap closing. We have some student subgroups who are not performing where our population as a whole are performing. So up there are all of the student subgroups that we have at North Canton City Schools that according to the state, we have enough students to constitute a subgroup. Everything that you see in green indicates an increase in the passing percent from 2016 to 2017. So for example, economically disadvantaged, the percent proficient in ELA, so that would be every state ELA test from third grade all the way up through the English II test. So we increased from 60.4% students passing to 73.6. You can see the next one, we stayed exactly the same. And almost all of the others, we increased, some that we didn't, we're still, still pretty good. An area that we still need to focus on, and we're going to continue to focus this year is our special education students. We do have some, some gaps with the achievement for our special education students. But I will tell you, we have within some of our buildings, in fact, it's within all of our buildings, we have pockets where our special education students are achieving at grade levels, and not just passing the test, but scoring at the advanced and accelerated levels. So we're gonna study that, we're gonna collaborate, we're gonna find out what is it that, you know, maybe perhaps some teachers or some teaching teams are doing that maybe some others aren't, and we're gonna identify those best practices and work to raise those scores. In 2016-17, we had 490 students who were accelerated in math. So in other words, we had 100, we had over 100, like 104 sixth graders who took seventh grade math, 105 seventh graders who took eighth grade math, I think it was 128 eighth graders then who took algebra, and then, or maybe it was 152, and then I think we had about 128, yeah, about 128, and ninth graders that took geometry. So they were all accelerated at least one year in math. And last year, for the first time, we accelerated students in grades six and seven. We've always in the past maybe had three or four or five students who were taking an accelerated math course, but we had, as I said, 104 sixth graders and 105 seventh graders. And there was, oops. There was some concern when we did it for the first year, and we did this all based on research. We knew this was the right thing. Research on acceleration pointed to the fact that when you accelerate students, they will rise to that next level of expectations, they will do very well, they'll be successful. But until we got that first group of students through, we were a little nervous, teachers, parents, students, administrators. Well, I'm happy to report to you that our results for the students who we accelerated were phenomenal. There's the 104 students who last year were sixth graders taking seventh grade math. So that means they take the seventh grade state math test. The year before, they took the fifth grade state math test. Forty-seven percent of them scored advanced, 50, 49% scored accelerated, 100% of them passed. So we had over 96% of them scoring at the advanced and accelerated levels. Remember I told you as a district, we had 60% of our students scored at the advanced and accelerated levels? So these students far exceeded our expectations. Here's the, here's the seventh graders that took... 7th graders that took 8th grade math. Again, about 85% of them scored in advanced and accelerated. Out of 105 of them, still 100% passage rate. 8th graders that took high school Algebra I. So they're beginning their high school transcript, 97.37 passage rate. 68% of them scored, actually a little over 69% of them scored advanced or accelerated. And then we had 129 students taking high school, 9th grade, actually 128, because one of them was, or two of them were 7th graders. But then 9th graders taking high school geometry. And you can see 97.67% passage rate, and 82 or 81 and a half percent of them scored advanced and accelerated. So, we're thrilled with those results. We're going to continue to do that. We've got similar numbers this year, accelerated, beginning in the 6th Some district celebrations. We had all As and Bs in all six academic component grades, as I mentioned, 2 As, 4 Bs. There was only one other district in all of Stark County to conclaim that. That district had 1 A and 5 Bs. We're the only district in Stark County to have all As and Bs on the 10 subcomponent grades. So there were 6 As and 4 Bs. We're one of only 12 districts in the entire state of Ohio that met the gifted indicator as a district. Now, I'll take a moment. That's huge, we're going to celebrate that, we're thrilled with that. But I also want to take a moment to, hopefully you understand how, and I don't know what other term to use other than the word ridiculous, how ridiculous the gifted indicator is for the state of Ohio. Because I can tell you, out of 608 districts, there are more than 12 districts that are doing great things and getting great results with gifted students. There are other districts in this county that are getting great results with gifted students. And we could say that a little bit about a lot of the state report card and the measures, because if you looked in the paper, you saw that, you know, there are a lot of districts in the area that didn't have the grades they would want. We have great school districts in Stark County. We're not the only great school district in the county. But, at the same time, we are going to celebrate our results. We're very, very thrilled with the results that we received. As I said earlier, we've got the most academic indicators of any district in Stark County, and we're one of only two districts in Stark County that got a B in that Prepare for Success category. There were no districts that received an A, which again is a little bit mind-boggling. We were one of only four Stark County districts to get an A on the progress component, and we were the only Stark County district to get all four As in the subcomponent grades for progress. As I mentioned ear, excuse me, as I mentioned earlier, we improved from a D to a B in K3 Literacy and Gap Closing. We're one of only two districts in Stark County where more than half of our graduates from the 2015 and 2016 classes were remediation-free according to the ACT. 51.3% of our students were remediation-free. That's in all parts, on all parts of the ACT. The county average is 31%. And I can tell you, the county average of 31% is above the national average, above the state average. One other county, one other district, our county, was just ahead of us at 52.1%. And then, this is very difficult to see, but you have this in hard copy, and I sent it to you digitally. This is a comparison where you can see each of the tests in 2016 compared to 2017. The top two rows are the district scores, and then we've got Greentown, Orchard Hill, and then the middle school, and then the high school. Anything you see in white is when we did not meet the state indicator. Keep in mind also that a year ago, the state indicators were all below 80%. Two years ago, when the new state test came about, they took the state averages across the state. So if the state average was 62%, or let's say it was 60%, make the simple math, if it was 60%, that's the percent of students that had to pass at a particular district or a school to meet the indicator. And they knew that two years later, which was 2017, they wanted all the benchmarks to be 80%. They took the midway point between that first year and 80%. So if you take the midpoint between 60 and 80, it's 70. So then last year, a district had to have 70% or more students pass the test in order to meet the indicator. For most of the tests last year, districts had to have anywhere from, districts and schools had to have anywhere from about 64 to about 72, 74% of its students proficient to meet the indicator. So this year, everything jumped up to 80%. So, we met 17 indicators a year ago. The percent, the benchmarks increased. In other words, we had to have more of our students pass each test in order to meet the mark. And even with that happening, we met three more indicators and met 20 of the 24 indicators. So our, again, our students, our parents, our community, our teachers, everybody has done a great, great job. Where you see the dark green, that means we were the highest in all of Stark County. So this year, we had the highest passing percentage in 7th grade math, Algebra I, English II, and American History. So, pretty excited about our report card results. We're not satisfied. We don't want them to stay here. We want to continue to improve, but we're going to celebrate what we've accomplished, and we know our staff's excited. And again, I mentioned this earlier, but we just want to thank every single instructional and non-instructional staff member who interacts with our students every day, because they all make a difference. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
I have a question. What are some factors that you can attribute to the big increases this year?
I started the job.
Other than you being so wonderful.
No, I just get to deliver the message, believe me. We've got staff who are doing, who's doing great work. We've got administrators who are doing great work. I started to jot some of these things down yesterday because I think we need to really consider that. We really tried to impress and focus with staff last year, talk about a focus on standards-based instruction. We've continued that this year. And I think that certainly is one of the pieces. I think there's probably, there's definitely multiple factors here, but so many times, teachers and school buildings and districts, they will adopt a curriculum. And they think that that curriculum is the end-all, be-all, and it's going to solve all their problems, and it's going to connect and teach every standard. It doesn't matter what curriculum a district adopts and uses for 7th grade math, English II, it doesn't matter. No one curriculum that's out there is going to align to every standard to the level that it needs to, and is going to teach it to the level that it needs to. So, we've really worked with our teachers on focusing on standards-based instruction, really looking at what is the standard asking the students to do, and looking at what we've done in the past, and are we teaching it up to that standard? So I think that has been part of it, and we've continued that focus this year. I think, you know, we try to provide our teachers the opportunity to collaborate. We try to give them the freedom knowing that here are the standards that need to be taught. But we're not going to dictate to you, everybody has to do it the exact same way. We're not going to say, you know, every single teacher has to be on page 348 and has to be giving this same assessment or this same quiz, or this same homework assignment on the same day. Because that's the part about the art of teaching. Our teachers are trained professionals. They know their content, they know instruction, they know their students' needs better than anyone else. So they know what the end target needs to be, then they plan backwards and do what they need to do to meet those benchmarks throughout the year. I think we've also, you know, our teachers, this is the, this is, last year I believe was the second year for MAP? Somebody help me out. Was last year the second year or third year?
For math?
For math.
No, like four.
Four, alright, I'm sorry.
A lot.
Okay. We use the MAP diagnostic from NWA. Our students in grades kindergarten through 8th grade take it three, three times a year. And one of the purposes is to achieve student growth measures for our teachers as part of their Ohio Teacher Evaluation System. But the other part is, we, I think, are really taking a look at that data and using it to identify where students' strengths and weaknesses are, and teachers then are trying to tailor their instruction. I think, if you noticed in some of those increases, there were huge increases in literacy. Four of the five largest increases were all in English Language Arts, different grade levels. And Michelle Hostetter, who's our Director of Instruction, who coordinates all of our title services, she has worked extensively with reading specialists, I think, to map out maybe a little bit more of a plan than what they have been provided for in the past. But those reading specialists were also a part of developing that plan. So I guess there's about four things off the top of my head. And, you know, there's been a focus on growth mindset, and really fostering and promoting a growth mindset among our students and among our staff and among us. We talk about always, you've heard Jeff talk about continuous improvement. It doesn't matter how good we are, we can always get better. And just because maybe we haven't achieved it yet, it doesn't mean that we can't get there. And our teachers do a great job working with students and communicating that, that mindset to students that, hey, if you don't get it the first time, and if you struggle, that's okay, we're going to continue to work with you, and we're going to get you there.
Thank you.
If you ask our teachers, they probably come up with a lot better, a lot more reasons that probably have had an impact too. Any other questions?
If I could just make a comment to that, some of the things that they've talked about are just truly amazing. One of the things that I wanted to mention was parents and families, supporting what we do in the district every day. That's a big, big piece of it. The other part is to try to make sure that we have a clear focus and a clear expectation for everybody in our district. What's expected of us, students included, the latitude to perform your job as a professional, and then some measurement, to say, hey, how are we doing, and what do we need to do to react to that, to make sure we're on track to get to where our goals are. So, feel very good about our staff. Our staff's just incredible. It's a great place for kids because of our staff, and also our parents. We truly appreciate the efforts of all, and the results show. We have a great community, a great district, and that's a great place for kids.
We have great, great middle school, high school department chairs and grade level building leaders. And one of the things, if you remember, a year ago, or probably in December or November, we came to you with is, we wanted to implement the grade level building leader position, much like a middle school, high school department chair. And I think those teachers have helped to take a leadership role and work closely with the principals to help lead the grade level teaching teams, and I think those have made a difference. Anything else? We're excited. We hope that they're this good next year.
Thank you, Mr. White. We appreciate your leadership.
Mr. Winnor? Yes, just a couple items on superintendent's update. In the camp repository today, and with a lot of our older students, this document was sent out, and it's about an epidemic in Stark County, about opioid and heroin, heroin deaths and abuse. Very important that the families, and the goal of Stark County leadership is to get one of these in every household, and to make sure folks are educated on a lot of different things. How to talk to kids about it, how to get help if you need it, and lots of different things. Just want to share that it's a, it's a very big problem in our county. 300 deaths since 2012 in Stark County alone to overdose. And it is an epidemic. Encourage you to read that, get a little one of these. They were in the repository today, I believe. And we also sent some home with kids, for families to look at. There's also a website attached to that, it's starkepidemic.com. You can get all the information there. Second thing is, take a look at our website. We've got a lot of stuff going on in the district. If you look at our website, look at the little calendar that's on there, and click District Activities or Full Calendar, you'll be able to see what's going on. You can filter it by activity. Ice Cream Social at Northwood Thursday, just lots of activities. And see a Northwood teacher smiling, that's a good, that's fun. And lots of things. Please participate. Please come and join us for those activities, let alone athletics, but in the arts. But just take a look at that. It's a great resource. Our staff does a great job of getting our activities on there. It's a, it's a good place to go to find activities. Also, North Canton City Schools Facebook and Twitter, you can follow those. And one of the fun ones on Twitter is North Canton Lunch Ladies Rock. It's fun to follow them. So, pretty cool to watch them. They do some great things. Also, on the website, I direct your attention to a tab under District. It's titled November 7th, Issue 44. You can find all kinds of information about the levy and bond issue that's on the ballot November 7th. There's just all the information's there, how we arrived at this plan, all of the frequently asked questions. Encourage you to go get the information to make an intelligent cast of a ballot. Also, on the table over by the bookshelf on there is a voter registration form. If you're not registered to vote, encourage you to do so. You can do so until October 10th. And shame on you if you're not, but you got a chance to get registered. It's a great country, and we should participate. Also, there's a form to request an absentee ballot. You can do so. Pretty close to the election time and receive an absentee ballot. Pretty easy to vote in your home, and take the time to look at your ballot and do some research to vote as you wish. And so, so for recommendations.
Can I ask some questions?
Um, no, we can't take questions right now.
Okay, I think I'm.
Thank you. I'll read the employment statement. The employment of all individuals who are being recommended for certificated or classified positions on this board agenda are subject to successful completion of requirements of revised code and any other applicable statutes. The treasurer shall be authorized to pay these individuals in accordance with the currently effective salaries we have to award them pay unless otherwise indicated. Under Certified Personnel, Item 1, it's recommended a limited contract be granted to Jeff Adu, an English teacher for the 2017-18 school year, effective September 21st of 17.
Motion for the recommendation employment.
Second.
Questions?
Mr. Greenwald?
Yes.
Mr. Cross?
Yes.
Mr. Hunt?
Yes.
Dr. Marion?
Yes.
Thank you. Item 2, a change of contract status. It's recommended the contract status of Stacy Remark, a St. Paul school nurse, be changed from seven and a half, five days a week, to seven hours, five days a week, effective for this school year.
Motion for the recommendation on change of contract.
Second.
Questions or comments?
Ms. Faye Rankin?
Yes.
Ms. Cross?
Yes.
Mr. Hunt?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwald?
Yes.
Dr. Marion?
Yes.
Thank you. It's recommended to the board this evening that the following stipend be added to the negotiated agreement between the North Canton Education Association and this board, effective for the 17-18 school year. That's for a senior class advisor at the amounts indicated.
Motion for the recommendation on creation of stipend.
Second.
I can just make a comment. We've had a junior class advisor in the contract for a number of years, but not a senior class advisor, who does a lot of work as a senior class advisor pertaining to graduation and so on. So, felt it was necessary to create that stipend position. The association has renewed that and enacted on that as well.
Mr. Greenwald?
Yes.
Ms. Faye Rankin?
Yes.
Mr. Hunt?
Yes.
Ms. Cross?
Yes.
Dr. Marion?
Yes.
Thank you. Item 4, a stipend modification. It's recommended the following stipend be modified to the negotiated agreement between the North Canton Education Association and this board, effective for the 17-18 school year, and that is to remove a head coach-only status on lacrosse.
Motion for the recommendation on stipend.
What this does is, there's a hold on several sports in our contract that we will only pay a stipend to the head coach. Essentially, they would have no paid assistance. This would remove that on the lacrosse. We have a lot of students who play lacrosse. They need some assistance to handle, paid assistance to handle those number of students. We also are moving our middle school lacrosse program back to a club sport that will not fill those positions and offer that sport. Therefore, no transportation for middle school, that's all.
Jeff, that's both men and?
Yes, boys and girls, correct.
Ms. Cross?
Yes.
Ms. Faye Rankin?
Yes.
Mr. Hunt?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwald?
Yes.
Dr. Marion?
Yes.
Thank you. Item 5, supplemental contracts. It's recommended that the listed individuals be granted a supplemental contract for their positions listed, effective for the 17-18 school year.
Motion for the recommendations on supplemental contracts.
Second.
Questions?
Mr. Greenwald?
Yes.
Ms. Cross?
Yes.
Mr. Hunt?
Yes.
Dr. Marion?
Yes.
Thank you. On item 6, we have, to amend several board recommendations, resolutions. A, it's recommend the supplemental contract listed for Board Resolution 7-16-17. The amendment is follows, the change of, changes Amanda Bozart Student Council to a split stipend between Amanda and Beth Hyland. It's also recommended that the Board Resolution 8-10-17, Resident Educator Mentors be amended to increase the hours of Christian Burt Ewing from 40 to 50 hours. And it's also recommend the Board Resolution 8-13-17, Intern School Psychologists be amended to increase that salary to 21.9 from 21.4.
Motion for the recommended amendments.
Second.
Questions?
Ms. Faye Rankin?
Yes.
Ms. Cross?
Yes.
Mr. Hunt?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwald?
Yes.
Dr. Marion?
Yes.
Thank you. Item 17, District and Resident Educator Mentors. It's recommended that the following individuals be employed as mentors, effective for the 17- 17-18 school year, and the treasurer be authorized to pay these individuals twenty-five dollars per hour. Jenny Ellis and Penny Jakowski.
Motion for the recommendations as listed.
Some of... Second.
Jeff, have a question, or maybe David's a question for you to read. Typically, we assign a mentor to a new teacher for some period of time, a year, two years, not so...
If they're, if they're a brand-new teacher to the field, and they have what's called their four-year resident educator license, then they have a mentor for the first two years assigned for up to forty hours of mentoring. Then their third year, they work with Shirley Dobree, our Resident Educator Coordinator, because that's when they submit their Resident Educator Summit Assessment, which is a state assessment they have to pass in order to move on to a five-year license. If we have a teacher that comes into the district with previous experience, and they already have their five-year professional license, then we provide a mentor for the first year for up to ten hours, called a district mentor. And these two hires, one is for somebody who was hired after the August board meeting, and the other, actually, both of them are for people who were hired after the August board meeting, but before the beginning of school.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Greenwald?
Yes.
Mr. Cross?
Yes.
Mr. Hunt?
Yes.
Dr. Marion?
Yes.
Ms. Van Rankin?
Yes.
Thank you. Item 8, Summer School Staff, payment? That always was a great, great duration. Excuse me. It's recommended that approval be granted to pay the following summer staff, summer school staff members for additional hours worked during the 17 Summer School Program. Treasurer be authorized to pay these individuals rate eighteen fifty per hour.
Motion for recommendations on paying as listed below.
Second.
You picked up a session. I, yeah, what happened was, we had somebody else who had been previously approved by the board to teach the second summer school session. That person then was unable to. Josh had talked the first session, and I was gonna approve the first session. So Josh substituted for that person, so it was not an additional thirty-four hours that we didn't plan on.
Mr. Greenwald?
Yes.
Ms. Van Rankin?
Yes.
Mr. Hunt?
Yes.
Mr. Cross?
Yes.
Dr. Marion?
Yes.
Thank you. Item 9, Coaches. It's recommended that the individuals listed be approved as coaches, effective for the 17-18 fall and winter sports season.
Motion for recommendations on coaches, and it's detailed in the attachment.
Some of...
Second. Questions?
See one fall volunteer that came on late after our August meeting, so we want to recognize a fall volunteer in the rest of winter sports.
Ms. Van Rankin?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwald?
Yes.
Mr. Hunt?
Yes.
Mr. Cross?
Yes.
Dr. Marion?
Yes.
Thank you. Item 10, Home Instructors. It's recommended that listed individuals be approved as home instructors, effective for the 17-18 school year.
Motion for the recommended list of home instructors?
Some of...
Second. Questions? Ms. Van Rankin?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwald?
Yes.
Mr. Hunt?
Yes.
Mr. Cross?
Yes.
Dr. Marion?
Yes.
Thank you. Item M, under Classified Personnel, resignation for retirement is recommended the resignation of Randall Mills, custodian, be accepted, effective January 1st of 2018.
Motion to accept the resignation?
Some of, second.
Randy's been here for twenty-five years, North Canton City Schools. Been a custodian at Northwood, North Canton Middle School, and Hoover High School, and he was unable to retain tonight.
Mr. Cross?
Yes.
Ms. Van Rankin?
Yes.
Mr. Hunt?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwald?
Yes.
Dr. Marion?
Yes.
Thank you. Item 2, we have three resignations. It's recommended that the resignation of Angela Miller, Educational Assistant, be accepted. It's also recommended the resignation of Pam Lazarity, Lazarites, Lunchroom Monitor, be accepted August 29th. And it's also recommended the resignation of Aleen, Aleen Benko, Bus Driver Only, be accepted, effective September 18th of 17.
Motion for the resignations as listed.
Some of... Second.
Mr. Greenwald?
Yes.
Mr. Cross?
Yes.
Mr. Hunt?
Yes.
Dr. Marion?
Yes.
Ms. Van Rankin?
Yes.
Thank you. Number 3, Leave of Absences. Recommended Rebecca Dixon, a monitor, be granted leave of absences defined in the negotiated agreement, effective November 4th through January 14th of 2018.
Motion for the recommendation on leave?
Some of, second.
Any questions? Ms. Van Rankin?
Yes.
Mr. Cross?
Yes.
Mr. Hunt?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwald?
Yes.
Dr. Marion?
Yes.
Thank you. On employment, it's recommended the, the listed individuals be granted a limited contract, effective for the 17-18 school year.
Motion for the recommended list for employment?
Second.
As you can see, the, the content there, those are all replacements for other moves in the district.
Mr. Greenwald?
Yes.
Mr. Cross?
Yes.
Mr. Hunt?
Yes.
Dr. Marion?
Yes.
Ms. Van Rankin?
Yes.
Item 5, a change of contract status. It's recommended the change of contract status be approved for the listed individuals, effective for the 17-18 school year.
Motion for recommended change of contract as listed.
Some of...
Second. Questions, second? Ms. Van Rankin?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwald?
Yes.
Mr. Hunt?
Yes.
Mr. Cross?
Yes.
Dr. Marion?
Yes.
Thank you. We have a list on item 6 of classified subs that we recommend that the listed individuals be approved as classified substitutes for the 17-18 school year.
Motion to approve recommended list of subs?
Second.
Questions? Mr. Greenwald?
Yes.
Mr. Cross?
Yes.
Mr. Hunt?
Yes.
Dr. Marion?
Yes.
Ms. Van Rankin?
Yes.
Thank you. Under Curriculum and Out-of-State Workshop, it's recommended that permission be granted for any floor, speech and language path to attend his picture, picture and language, a how-to workshop in Pittsburgh with no cost to the board.
Motion for recommendation on out-of-state trip?
Some of, second.
Ms. Van Rankin?
Yes.
Mr. Cross?
Yes.
Mr. Hunt?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwald?
Yes.
Dr. Marion?
Yes.
Thank you. It's item 2, Out-of-State Tournament. Recommended permission be granted for Missy Sturtz-Bon, Jim Kellum's Speech and Debate Coaches, and the high school speech team, Speech and Debate Students, to participate in New York Invitational Speech and Debate Tournament in the Bronx, New York, with no cost to the board.
Motion to accept the recommendation on out-of-state trip? Some of...
Second.
Mr. Greenwald?
Yes.
Mr. Cross?
Yes.
Mr. Hunt?
Yes.
Dr. Marion?
Yes.
Ms. Van Rankin?
Yes.
Thank you. Under Special Services, a contract agreement, it's recommended contract agreement with cross-threat solutions, limited be approved for 17-18 school year, effective September 1st through August 31st of 2018, not to exceed the contracted agreement.
Motion to approve contract as attached?
Some of, second.
Yeah, English families and students with English language designation, yes.
Ms. Van Rankin?
Yes.
Mr. Cross?
Yes.
Mr. Hunt?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwald?
Yes.
Dr. Marion?
Yes.
Thank you. Item 2, it's recommended that Board Resolution 8, 21, 17, be amended to change the effective dates for contracted agreement with Akron Children's Hospital. The agreements shall be effective for 17-18, 18-19, and 19-20 school years.
Motion for recommendation on ending the resolution? Some of...
Second.
Thank you. That was a mistake, it was a one-year, as on the board agenda issue.
Well, the contract was correct. The contract clearly listed it was a three-year, but the Fertvich in the resolution was not.
So rates stay the same for three years? Or not much more?
I believe so, yeah. They're listed as the, in the contract.
John, special, John special.
Right.
Yes.
Those are listed specials, same, the, the amounts are contracted.
Correct, and it was a cost-saving measure, go for multiple years.
For a three-year, yeah, thanks.
Okay, Mr. Greenwald?
Yes.
Mr. Cross?
Yes.
Mr. Hunt?
Yes.
Dr. Marion?
Yes.
Ms. Van Rankin?
Yes.
Thank you. Under Student Services, it's recommended that permission be granted for a senior student to continue attending Hoover High School on a tuition-free basis for the remainder of a senior year, due to the relocation of his family out of district.
Motion for recommendation on tuition waiver? Some of...
Second.
Mr. Greenwald?
Yes.
Mr. Cross?
Yes.
Mr. Hunt?
Yes.
Dr. Marion?
Yes.
Ms. Van Rankin?
Yes.
Thank you. Item 2, it's recommended the following individuals be approved as foreign exchange students to attend Hoover High School for the 17-18 school year, and that they be reported as students of the average daily membership for the high school for this school year.
Motion for recommendation on exchange students?
Some of, second.
Ms. Van Rankin?
Yes.
Mr. Cross?
Yes.
Mr. Hunt?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwald? Do I need to abstain as the observer in the exchange of work? I just...
Yes.
And, I, Dr. Marion? Thank you. Anything for technology?
Nothing for technology this evening, and Mr. Rahany's gonna pick up on buildings and grounds. Contracted agreement, it is recommended that a contracted agreement with the North Canton Carriage Society be approved, effective October 1st, 2017, through September 30th, 2018.
Motion to approve the contract as attached?
Some of, second.
Okay, Ms. Van Rankin?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwald?
Yes.
Mr. Hunt?
Yes.
Mr. Cross?
Yes.
Dr. Marion?
Yes.
It is recommended that permission be granted to the Girl Scouts of America, Girl Scout Troop 61094, to use the cafeteria at Orchard Hill Intermediate School, after-school on the third Friday of the month, from September 15th, 2017, through May 18th, 2018, rental fee and support staff costs waived. Further, it is recommended that permission be granted to the Girl Scouts of America, Girl Scout Troop 60038, to use the cafeteria at Orchard Hill Intermediate, after-school on the first Friday of the month, from September 8th through May 4th, rental fee and support staff waived. It is recommended permission granted to the Girl Scouts of America, Brownie Troop 60589, to use the cafeteria at Greentown Intermediate School, after-school on the second, fourth,